Regular meeting of the thirty-fourth council of the city of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekal?
Here.
Councilmember Plaid Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protam Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor Odewier?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the addition of item number seven. Motion M. eighteen thirteen, please.
Is there a second to that motion? Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Any additional changes, additions? Hearing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Odewier?
Yes. And now would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the form at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Jim Greenwood. I'm a resident of Huntington Woods. Not to be discriminated against here. And I'm here to speak a little bit about a garden, a community garden in Berkeley. It's located at Song and Spirit, which is at Coolidge and Harvard. It's across the street from, it's on the south side of Harvard, across the street from Losola Church. And I've met some good friends here that I know who are also putting in some gardens in Berkeley. And one of the things that we feel is pretty unique about this garden is that it's going to be accessible to people with handicaps. And that's a bad term. It's really accessible to people with disabilities. And the concept is that we have people with disabilities inclusive with people without disabilities who can work together. And probably it's going to be the only program of its magnitude and scope in the state of Michigan. We've hired the head of Berkeley's Special Ed Department, Cheryl Burke, who is developing programs for us. We have also hired a farm manager who'll be running the farm. And we are hiring a program coordinator who can work with outreach to the community. And what we want to do is be able to bring some awareness of the project to the city of Berkeley. And it seems as though there are little steps that we take, and little by little, people are starting to recognize Song and Spirit, number one. And number two, that we do have a community garden there that is going to be a unique project. So that's really all I have to say. And if there are questions, I'll be happy to address some.
Thank you, Jim, for being here.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, Ms. DeSessa, Madam Clerk, Mr. Sabuda. It wasn't so very long ago that we signed a covenant here in the city, a covenant to share in love and protect our veterans in the community. Little did I know that back then, when the mayor sent me to sign that covenant, that I would be here tonight to speak to you about a sad, a bitter, but sweet opportunity for the city of Berkeley. I want you to know that the city of Berkeley, the residents in the city of Berkeley and this community have been overwhelmingly helpful and outpouring with care and concern for what I'm about to speak on. In 2011, the city of Berkeley had its good graces of having the Grand Marshal, Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach for the Woodward Dream Cruise Parade. Matthew was a resident of Ferndale and a member of the Berkeley American Legion. I'm going to tell you a little bit about his bio, but Matthew passed away in Afghanistan, on his first tour in Afghanistan, on June the twenty-sixth. Since August of this year, we've put together a conglomeration of people who have raised well over $20,000. We're going to erect, in just a few moments, I'm going to present each of you with an invitation to attend. But there will be a monument erected in front of the Berkeley American Legion at 2079 West 12 Mile Road. That'll be on April the twenty-seventh at 11:00 a.m. sharp. But please, if I could, just tell you a little bit about Matthew and what we've done and where we're going. It is the intention of the Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach Memorial Fund to erect, in his honor, a monument consisting of the American flag, a battle cross, a granite piece inscribed with the following: For those who lay down their life so we may stand, you are never forgotten, in memory of Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach, Eighty-Second Airborne, Ferndale, Michigan, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve. The monument area also includes a commemorative bench in honor of those children who have lost their parents in the battle for freedom. On that bench will also commemorate Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach's one-year-old son, Jack. Matthew Leach was born on September first, nineteen eighty-two, in Ferndale, Michigan, where he met his wife Sarah Cantz while in the first grade. Matt joined the Army, became a paratrooper in the Eighty-Second Airborne in December of two thousand and three. Matt and Sarah married on September third, two thousand and five. Shortly after that, actually the following week, Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach deployed for his first tour in Iraq, serving until February of two thousand and six. Matt's second deployment was into Baghdad in January of two thousand and seven, returning to Sarah in March of two thousand and eight at their Fort Bragg home. Matt continued his Army career by joining the U.S. Army Reserve in June of two thousand and nine. He was appointed to the funeral honors team, covering veterans' funeral services in Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana. On November twenty-eighth of two thousand and eleven, Matt and Sarah welcomed their son, Jack Hunter Leach. Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach was serving his first tour of duty in Afghanistan and lost his life on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve. Since that unfortunate experience, as I said, we've come together as a community, Berkeley, Royle Oak, Huntington Woods, Ferndale, places far beyond the city and the state. People have been so kind and so generous. We commissioned the artwork from the state of Utah. And I'll tell you just a quick little piece. The artist is Stan Watts. Stan is a good friend of General Hoffman, who led the troops into Iraq. Matthew worked for General Hoffman, and upon his death, he told the artist about it. And when I called, he was amazed that I would find him, and it was merely by accident that I did. But I can tell you that his generosity has helped bring what's about to happen for this city and this community, and honoring Matthew Leach and any unfortunate service members who will lose their life, and the children of those members as well. I don't think I have much else to say, but thank you so much for your kindness. Thank you for your continued support in the community for veterans and abroad. So may I approach?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I have mine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your work.
I have one more.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Ms. DeSessa, Mr. Sabuda, and Madam Clerk, thank you so very much. I look forward to hopefully seeing you, and if you have any questions or intentions that you need answered, please let me know at the Berkeley American Legion.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, for all you do for our veterans. We appreciate the leadership, and we're proud of all the effort that it takes to bring about this kind of memorial. And we thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks. Anybody else for citizens' comments? Seeing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on March eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen; work session meeting on March sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen; joint meeting between the cities of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, and the Berkeley School District on Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand and thirteen; and the special council meeting on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Item number two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number one-two-six-four. Item number three, ordinance number O-dash-one-dash-thirteen. Matter of approving an amendment to Chapter one-thirty-eight zoning, Article four, off-street parking and loading, Division three, bicycle parking requirements of the Berkeley City Code, second reading. Item number four, proclamation number P-dash-five-dash-thirteen. Matter of approving a proclamation supporting the initiatives of Earth Day, two thousand and thirteen, in the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekal, with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Odewier?
Yes. And now we come to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Kadekal to read proclamation five-thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming to support the initiatives of Earth Day, two thousand and thirteen, in the city of Berkeley. Whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles; and whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth; and whereas it is understood that the citizens of global community must step forward and take action to create a green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges; and whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns; and whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success; and whereas the city of Berkeley has an engaged and active environmental advisory committee, which studies and recommends measures and approaches to conserving energy, protecting the environment, preserving green space, and educating and informing citizens regarding steps they can take to protect the environment; and whereas Berkeley residents and businesses have been making voluntary efforts to curb energy use and to protect the environment; and whereas the city of Berkeley encourages its residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and commit to building a sustainable green economy. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the city of Berkeley hereby pledges this Earth Day, April twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, to support green economy initiatives in the city of Berkeley and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. Proclaim this first day of April, two thousand and thirteen, at a regular meeting of the city council. Phil Odewier, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we move on to item number two. Ms. Prince, would you please read that one?
Motion number M. fifteen thirteen. Matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into a legal services agreement with Hafeli Steren and Christ PC in the amount in tax season sixty thousand dollars. This is a one-year contract with an optional renewal for two additional years.
Is there a motion to approve M. fifteen thirteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protam Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. DeSessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of City Council. As directed at the last council meeting, I did just that. I, together with the help from our Labor Council, assisted us in the preparation of this agreement that's before you. It has been reviewed by our Labor Council, and he is recommending it for your consideration and approval. I know that if the city council approves this agreement, the attorney will then sit at the table with us as soon as that is done. But just for the public out there, just wanted to go over a little bit in terms of the history, and perhaps Mr. Steren himself may want to add a few things. Again, just very basic, Hafeli Steren and Christ is an Oakland County law firm. They provide primarily legal services to clients in the metro Detroit area. They have received numerous awards in such areas such as the AV Peer Review Ratings and the Martindale-Hubble Law Directory. Their members have also been featured in Super Lawyers and the D. Business Top Lawyers Edition. As indicated in their presentation to us, their attorneys are committed to the needs of their clients, and they focus on each of their clients' circumstances and needs with respect to every matter and service provided. Just to give you an idea in terms of some of the areas that they have expertise in, they include things such as advising boards and commissions and attending their meetings, issues that deal with annexation, cable television, charter amendments, civil rights, code enforcement, construction, contract drafting and negotiations, I should say, elections, environmental, the Freedom of Information and Open Meetings Act, historic preservations, intergovernmental cooperation, land division, litigation, ordinance drafting, property taxation, prosecutions, and I can go on and on and on in terms of what this firm does. But basically, they provide services to municipal governments, and that's really where their main focus is in. They also serve as city attorneys for the cities of Ferndale, Lake Angeles, Rochester Hills, and the Village of Franklin. With that, Your Honor, I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Very good. Are there any questions remaining on this topic? We've been over this from one end to the other. Seeing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Odewier?
Yes.
Mr. Steren?
Now, Mr. Attorney, you may take your seat. If there is anything you'd like to say now that you have a microphone at your disposal?
Well, after Ms. DeSessa's introduction, I think I do need to assure the audience, we do not walk on water. But I appreciate, I appreciate all the other nice things. And on behalf of myself and my partners and our staff, we welcome this opportunity, and we will try to provide you, and we will provide you with good legal service to the best of our abilities, and we look forward to it.
Thank you. And later on in the meeting, you will have another opportunity to share your thoughts with us. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. thirteen thirteen. Matter of designating May eleventh through the nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, as Berkeley Days.
Is there a motion to approve resolution thirteen thirteen?
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Kadekal?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. DeSessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To help me introduce this item, the chairperson of this great event is with us this evening, Denise Brainard. Denise, if you don't mind, I'm sure you would like to talk about the event and the upcoming events that are being planned. I really would appreciate it.
Oh, no, thank you for this opportunity. It is, we're getting close to Berkeley Days again, so for several reasons, I needed to come tonight. First, to lay out some of the new events that we have this year, maybe to issue a challenge or two. But what I think has been wonderful, for I'm sure everybody is aware, Berkeley Days is a carnival community event that actually benefits most of the community service organizations in the city of Berkeley. And I think I can say most of them, because we've got pretty much all of them participating in some way, shape, or form. This year, Berkeley Days is going to kick off with the race. Last year, we added the five K to the race and had a phenomenal year. The race is being run by the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and you can register for the event at active.com. There is also, hopefully, at some point, going to be a link on the Facebook page. I am technologically challenged, and I'm doing the best I can to be able to link everything up on Facebook. But Berkeley Days is on Facebook now. So we've got the race, and that's going to be on Saturday, May eleventh. Then we go on Tuesday, May fourteenth. We are going to have the Miss Berkeley Days pageant. We did have a Miss Berkeley Days last year, but we weren't quite able to get the pageant off the ground. We are going to be able to do that this year. It's going to be at Farina's, I believe, and it's another way, one of the goals that I have is to try to incorporate the businesses more into Berkeley Days. And we've got the community service organizations on board. I'm trying to get the businesses more involved with it. So that's going to be on Tuesday, May fourteenth. We've got the softball game on Wednesday, May fifteenth, as you're all aware, of the city employees versus the mom-and-dads clubs. And that's going to be on Wednesday, May fifteenth. The Midway's going to open up on Thursday, which is May sixteenth. Also on Thursday, or on Thursday, May sixteenth, I think everybody's really looking forward to Having the Taste of Berkeley, which is sponsored by the Berkeley and Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. And that's been a phenomenal event for the, this is the third year, it's been growing every year, and I think everybody really is looking forward to that. We are also on Thursday, last year, we tried to do the questionnaire for the kids to get them more involved. We made that a little too challenging. I know that some, it was entirely too, not a little too challenging, it was way too hard. It was way too hard. We have made it much easier this year. And my hope is that we will have more people participating. The questionnaire will be available on our Facebook page. I'll also be sending that out to the school, and I'll have copies of it around the community as well. The questionnaires can be received by May tenth, and everybody who answers the questionnaire correctly will be entered for a chance to win. Basically, it's a VIP wristband for the Midway, for the duration of Berkeley Days. And that's going to, that drawing will take place on Thursday, May sixteenth, at five o'clock, outside of the Taste of Berkeley. On Friday, we're going to have, the Midway will kick off. One thing that we're doing this year, and I think it's one of the ways that we're really able to work together with the community, this year, we're kind of trying to showcase the music programs in the schools. So Saturday morning, during the VFW Pancake Breakfast, we're going to have the choirs from the middle school and the high school are going to be singing. We're going to have a stage set up inside the craft show, and we're going to try to be able to showcase some of the different music programs at the high school. I'm hoping on Sunday morning, during the pancake breakfast, we're going to be able to bring in the marimbas from Angel and have the marimba music as the accompaniment for pancakes on Sunday morning. I know the kids are really looking forward to it. The kids that have been broached about it are really excited about it. And our music program in our Berkeley schools is so phenomenal. We've received recognition, and I thought this would just be a great way to really be able to bring the schools in and showcase the music programs that we have. So that's going to be going, we'll have that. We're hoping that anytime the craft show is open, we will have a music group or some sort of musical ensemble from the high school playing. The Friday night, we also, here's the challenge, the horseshoe contest between the Berkeley Days Association and city council. I have been practicing, been working on it all winter. Ready, ready for this, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
All right.
Not a chance, not a chance.
So that will be on Friday night at seven o'clock. The VFW is going to have their pancake breakfast on Saturday and Sunday mornings. A treat that we have this year, Saturday evening, the historical committee is going to have a book signing for their new book that is coming out called Berkeley. And that will be at, from six to nine, in the ice rink at the craft show. The authors will be there to sign copies of it. The wonderful part about that is I believe most of the proceeds are coming back to the historical committee. And it's a wonderful opportunity. It's going to be a treat to have that during Berkeley Days this year. Sunday, we're still going to have the pancake breakfast. The Midway, we're going to have the petting zoo on Sunday. Oh, I forgot, on Saturday, we're going to have the punt, pass, and kick from the Berkeley Steelers. They're going to have that competition on Sunday. They tried it for the first time last year. It was on Sunday. This year, we're going to do it on Saturday due to a scheduling conflict. The horseshoe tournament, the raffle drawing, will be on Sunday afternoon. We're hoping for fantastic weather. We are also doing Citizen of the Year and Humanitarian of the Year. Those applications will, if we all cross our fingers, also be on the Facebook page. There will also be hard copies around the community. City Hall, the community center, the library will have those. Citizen of the Year is a way for us to honor an individual who resides in the city of Berkeley, who really shows the spirit that we have, the spirit of volunteerism, of community that we have in Berkeley. We've also got the humanitarian of the year as another, could be a business owner, doesn't necessarily have to be a resident of Berkeley, because so many of our business owners are so wonderful in assisting us, donating goods and services throughout the year, that we want to be able to recognize a business as well. So I hope that we get lots of people recommending, you know, filling out the forms and recommending people for both Citizen of the Year and Humanitarian of the Year. The deadline for that entry is May first, and all the information is on the forms that will be around town. If anybody has any questions, I will be happy to answer them, but I'm really looking forward to it this year. The carnival is coming back, the Skurbeks are wonderful, and everybody always has so much fun. I know the middle school is, administrators are less than excited when they see them roll into town in their backyard, because it's tough to keep the kids focused after that. But, you know, last year, we had a wonderful year, the weather cooperated. We are also, with the permission of council, going to have the beer tent again this year. It's sponsored by the VFW, I mean, I'm sorry, the American Legion, I misspoke. It's the American Legion and the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Rec. We would like to do that outside. There's a conflict with the ice, so I know many people are going to be happy that it's going to be outside again. And the proceeds will benefit the Parks and Recs programs, as well as programs through the American Legion. I know in the past, they've used it to help local families who may be, have service members deployed and local vets. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Very good. Mayor Protam Turbrak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment and a question. First, I just want to thank you for everything that you do. I mean, this is certainly a laborious task to do every year. It's not something that just happens without you putting in a lot of time and effort and thoughtfulness in all of the programs, and how much you've been able to grow Berkeley Days, excuse me, over the last couple of years, with all the different activities and things that you've put into it. You know, people see you come here, and they might see you there, but I don't think they really realize just how much time you and the committee really puts into making sure that this is a fantastic week, extended week, for the residents. So I really, I want to thank you. It certainly is appreciated. And one question, I can't remember, who won the softball game last year? Because it was, it's almost been a year.
It has been a year. You know what?
Almost a year, not quite.
I'm trying to think back, I was just downloading the pictures from the softball game.
There is a trophy down the hall.
And then I got distracted because of the horseshoe tournament.
See, that doesn't count. We're only talking about softball right now. Only talking about softball.
I believe the mom-and-dad's club may...
Lost.
Yes. I think, I think they did.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And thank you. And I will say that the committee is fabulous. There are such wonderful people that work on Berkeley Days, and they work hard all year long to make it happen. We're always looking for new groups that want to get involved. So anybody is welcome to come to our meetings, and we're, for the next couple of months, probably going to be there, about every Wednesday night at the community center. But it's the third Wednesday of the month at the community center. If anybody is interested in, you know, bringing a new idea to the table, we'd love to have them. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Plaid Onson?
I, too, would love to thank you. You do so much, the volunteers do so much. You've added a lot of things over the course of the almost two years now you've been doing this.
It seems like so much longer.
I know. I can see that. It's a lot of work. And I did want to bring up something that I, that was sort of new last year, and something that's been expanded this year. We've been doing a lot of work in Berkeley around our brand... We've been doing a lot of work in Berkeley around our, our brand and our mission statement. Anybody who's caught any of our notes from our special work sessions, really trying to be progressive and be inclusive. And to me, I'm just not sure that a, a girl's pageant sends that same message. It doesn't include the young men. I, I think if the idea is to distinguish, is to honor distinguished young people, that there's really, at this, in this day and age, a way to do that, that's, that's more inclusive and speaks more highly to the type of young women that we have here in Berkeley. So, we've just been doing a lot of work around this, and I see a lot of really great things in here. This is something that I, I would encourage you to think about what we're really saying to our citizens when we have a girls-only pageant for, for our, for these distinguished young women, how we can make that something that sends the message that Berkeley honors and values these young people across the board, and a way to make that a little more representative of where we've been heading pretty strongly. I mean, we've had some great work sessions over the last year or so. So, it's something that I would encourage you to take, to take a look at.
And I will say that that is, that is something that we are considering. Starting out, though, until we can get everything off the ground, we try to start a little more narrowly, and I'm hoping that eventually down the road, that is where we get to. And it's something that we have talked about. But, just for the sake of trying to get it off the ground, we're starting smaller, and then hoping to expand the program once we figure out what we're doing and how we're doing it. So, I, I will, I agree with you. I'll also point out, it is a scholarship program. The, we've limited it to, up to the junior year, because we want to make sure that the person, at this point, it's a girl, down the road, you know, we're, like I said, we're hoping to expand it. But she's available in the community. I know most of you have seen Miss Berkeley Days at various events throughout the year. She's really been active and out there and representing the community. But I do agree, we don't, it's something we are hoping to expand. So...
And any other points to be made on this? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, wanted to extend my gratitude to you and the committee for all the work that you've done. These past several years have been, you know, continuing to build on the strength that we've had, the, the wonderful foundation that Berkeley Days has been for, for decades now. And then to see this incremental growth year after year, these fresh ideas, this energy that you bring, that the committee brings, that the community brings, is, is, is fantastic. And I just wanted to, again, echo the comments of my colleagues and, and pretty much all of us here, I imagine, around the, the way in which we celebrate. Our community is reflected in the way that you and the committee embrace this so wholeheartedly. So, I wanted to, to thank you for that, and, and here's to another fantastic Berkeley Days.
Thank you very much.
Very good. It just falls to me to echo what has been said. We are enormously thankful for the, the work and effort and thinking that you guys put into this signature city event. It's a critically important event for us as a community. Brings us all together, brings the folks together, and we're excited about continuing to keep our softball title. And I have one question. I don't mean to set the new city attorney on you, but I have a question. Mr. Attorney, how good are you at horseshoes?
I guess if, if I enter it, we'll, we'll find out, won't we?
Very good. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you very much.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R 1313?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M 1613, matter of amending the city's fee schedule effective May 1st, 2013.
Is there a motion to approve M 1613?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Sessa.
Council, you may recall, at our previous council meeting, we did have a work session to discuss these items specifically. And with us this evening is our city planner, Ms. Amy Vanson. Ms. Vanson, would you please join us, and just for the viewing public, give us a summary of the, of the items that we're looking to, to bring up today, please?
Hello. Yeah, as Mrs. Sessa said, we talked about this on March 18th. The fees that are before you are pertaining to the building department. We have construction permits with regard to above-ground and in-ground pools. There is a difference in how many electrical inspections occur. So, we have, we have noted that in the proposed fee schedule. Again, with regard to electrical permits, temporary service permit fees are standalone items. The fee schedule showed it as $22, but we have a minimum fee of 40. So, it's, it's a matter of housekeeping to notch it up to $40, so that somebody reviewing the fee schedule will know that it's 40. We have changed motors, generators, welders, heating power units, and central air. We've deleted generators. According to the electrical inspector, generators are charged on a per-circuit basis, so that has been changed. Electric car charging stations, solar panels, and wind turbines, while we have always allowed these. I did ask the electrical inspector to come up with a package, so if somebody's Googling it, they'll be able to find it right away, instead of trying to guess whether or not we allow them. There was some question with regard to how the $65 had been arrived at, and when I asked the electrical inspector, he actually couldn't recall why solar panels and wind turbines were that way. Electric car charging stations are $65, because it's a service plus a power circuit, which adds up to $65. But he agreed that solar panels and wind turbines should have been the minimum fee of $40 for the first turbine. With regard to heating permits, I had asked all of our inspectors who work in various cities to look at whether we were out of whack. Most of our fees had not been updated either since 2002 or 2007. They advised us that humidifiers and water heaters were considerably lower, so we have increased it instead of the $40 minimum fee for a standalone water heater or a $25 water heater, if you were getting a number of items. The recommendation is $50. Our inspectors advised us that we were missing some items, so electronic air cleaners, thermal expansion tanks, I don't know what that is. Welded exhaust vents have been added in accordance with what our peer communities are charging for that. In the city of Berkeley, we only require a new business to get a business license, and if a business is transferring or changing ownership, or if it's moving to larger quarters, we charge a $100 fee. Otherwise, it's just an initial fee of $150. This has not been updated since 2007, so the recommendation is to bump that up to $200. Most communities around us require an annual or a biennial fee of that magnitude, so this is still a bargain. Pursuant to the ordinance that was just adopted on the consent agenda, bicycle racks, the purchase and installation of them has been set in the fee schedule. If a property owner that is required to install a bike rack and, for whatever reason, doesn't feel they have the room, or for whatever reason does not want to do it, the city can require that they need to, that the city will install one within a block of that business. So, and that's the $300 fee, which is the time for DPW to do it, plus the, the purchase of the bicycle rack. Plumbing permits, the fees have been upgraded. Again, grease traps, some, or interceptors and water heaters, which we already covered, have been increased. Medical gas, which was not covered under our fee schedule and does need to be inspected, is there. With regard to sewer and storm permits, our water distribution permit fees, our fees were quite low compared to other cities. Many cities had starting permits at $65 instead of our $15, and they went all the way up to, instead of $60, $140. I thought that was a little too much. But I have recommended going from $15 to 30, and from, for an over-four inch service, which would really be only industrial applications, from $60 to 120. And last but not least, currently, we have two bonds. If you're doing water and, or sewer work, excuse me, sewer excavation work, if it's, if sewer's essentially on your side of the street, it's a $500 bond. We require that, because what we found were some excavators messed with our water lines, and our water lines are old, and they're finicky, and then they started trying to mess with them, instead of calling DPW and dealing with all of that. And we found that a $500 cash bond kept everybody much more honest and much more careful when they were digging, because they wanted their $500 back, and they didn't want to have to call DPW. So, it had the desired effect. The $1,500 bond is required if the sewer's on the other side of the street, and you've got to go across the street. What DPW has found is that when the sidewalk's involved, we are sometimes having some problems getting excavators to come back and put the sidewalk back. And so, what Public Works had recommended is having a stepped bond of $500 if the only excavation required is between the sidewalk and your home. $1,000 if it's involving the public right-of-way, but not the street, so anywhere between the berm and the sidewalk, that would be $1,000. And then still $1,500 if it's going to the street, which our finance director pointed out during the work session, in no way covers the cost at all. But it is a cash bond. We don't want to, these are small businesses, and we don't want to be punitive to the people that are doing the work that they're supposed to. It's really just an insurance. It, it's kind of a carrot and stick thing. When we have had to go after people, it, it ends up being, would you say twice as much work? Yeah, twice as much the cost. So, but to require a cash bond of $3,000 every time you're doing sewer work would be excessive to the people that are doing what they're supposed to do. And I try to do that as quickly as possible.
Very good. Councilmember Platt Onson?
My apologies, because we went over this in great depth at the work session. But on this particular issue, I just want to clarify a point for my brain here. It says, berm excavating bond between sidewalk and street. Does that include the sidewalk?
Yes. It would be the, that right-of-way.
Okay.
As opposed to the $500 is your front lawn.
I just want to make sure that if something happens to the sidewalk, this includes that. So, do the words between sidewalk and street-
Just say sidewalk and sidewalk and berm.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, if the word works legally, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're-
No, if it's not clear, we should change it, so it's clear for everybody.
That the sidewalk isn't floating in space as a, oh, I touched that, but it didn't count.
The intent was the public right-of-way. That's not the street. So, if there's a way to clarify it, we will, and make sure it's clear.
So, yeah, okay. So, we're making this point, then, that it's going to be clarified?
Yes.
That sentence, so that it's clear, our intent. We know our intent.
Yes. It's a berm excavating bond, so it would be the sidewalk and the berm.
Perfect. Everybody, everybody understands that?
Yes. All I was going to say was, that was going to be my exact same question. And so I wanted to tell you that I didn't get that either.
Okay.
I got it. I wasn't sure that it-
Then it needs clarified.
It doesn't sound like it includes the sidewalk there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Concerns? Were the changes that we suggested all in accord with the ideas we had at the work session? Very well. Well, then, if there are no other discussion pending this clarification of language, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R 1413, matter of approving a resolution to order demolition of the House at 2326 Axford.
Is there a motion to approve R 1413?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadeklo. Ms. Sessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this resolution is part of a, a process in order for us to be able to do a demolition. And I know that we have very few demolitions in the city of Berkeley. I, I don't recall when the last one we did.
2010.
2010. So, it has, it has been a while. And even then, for members of the public, this is not something that, that, that can be readily done. And having said that, Ms. Vanson, if you don't mind, please, just give us a brief summation in terms of what, what this process is.
The process follows state law. It's not a Berkeley ordinance. It's State of Michigan Housing Law, Act 167 of 1917, that defines dangerous buildings. It prohibits dangerous buildings, and it provides for a way of municipalities to either make them safe or have them demolished. Pursuant to that, the council appoints a hearing officer, and that person, it's the mayor's appointment, council confirms it. And this person is available to essentially convene the city side of it, which be the, which would be the building official, saying, this building, we believe to be unsafe. And then you have the other side, the property owner or representative, saying, well, this is how I'm going to make it safe, or no, it's not really dangerous. You have, and so the hearing officer is the one that convenes that, and then makes a recommendation to city council. And in, if the building does in fact, if it's his recommendation that it be demolished, it's up to city council. The hearing officer does not have that final say. He's an appointed person. It is up to city council, who is elected, to decide if you confirm or concur with the hearing officer. In this particular case, the House had been tagged for unsanitary conditions, and the people were not allowed to live in it. They could come back and clean it up. Our information from our code enforcement officer some time ago was that they were walking away from it. This was back in 2011, and so they had walked away from it. GMAC Bank did register the property as a vacant property. And we generally, because Berkeley is an attractive community, we find that a lot of these cases, we let the private sector handle it. It's, it's, the lots are desirable enough, the houses are desirable enough. We weren't really seeing any movement on this. And we had a developer that was interested in it. We gave him the information that we had, it's public information, on who had registered it. And he advised us that GMAC Bank was saying they didn't own the property, which puzzled us quite a bit, since they had registered it as vacant. And we had many very circular conversations with GMAC Bank representatives that are all over the country. We decided, we weren't getting any movement on it. It was not getting any better, the situation, and it really needed to be dealt with. So, we did have a hearing. It was posted in accordance with state law. All of the interested parties were notified. GMAC Bank did get a surrendering address of the people that had left, notified everyone. GMAC did have an attorney come to the meeting, so I guess they did sort of, kind of own it, sort of. As it turns out, there was a typo in some of the titles, and so even though it had been vacant for some time, GMAC had not gone forward with any foreclosure procedures, unfortunately. So, it was still back at the beginning. Foreclosure takes a long time, and this still hadn't even happened, because there was a typographical error, and it went from the easy-to-foreclose pile to the hard-to-foreclose pile, essentially. The bank was not at all opposed to moving forward with this. They were in concurrence with it, after having seen the photographs. We had not gotten into the house. So, the hearing officer, when we had our first meeting on February 14th, it ordered that the house be inspected by the building official. We were able to obtain voluntary entry. There was no search warrant necessary, which was something we were thinking we were going to have to pursue. But the resident did allow Dwayne Franks in. He took some photos, you have those, and was able to see that there is, there are, there are some issues with this property. And so, the building official's really, it could not be salvaged and it needed to be demolished. The hearing officer concurred. The bank, who was present, the bank representative that was present, concurred. They had no objection at all. And they were going to work with the property owner to have a short sale and move forward with it that way. So the property owner was notified of this hearing and was advised that, you know, that this was going to be happening tonight and that she was, it was a public meeting and she was allowed to attend. And if council adopts this resolution, then the twenty-one days is in accordance with state law. I would imagine that it will take longer just to get the utilities shut. I would begin pursuing that. I know that the short sale is happening, is what I've been told, but no property transfer has happened at, as of this point. And we do have a, a building that is problematic right now. Was that brief enough? I'm sorry. I never know if I'm going too long or too short. I want to make sure we've got all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, but...
No, it's very good. It is important for us to understand the history of this situation and the claimants to the property, including the bank and the, and the issue we have to concern ourselves with as well as the neighbors.
Yes.
And people who have to live close to this. But are there any, any questions for Ms. Vanson before we get into this more? Well, I drove by the property and I suspect several of my colleagues did as well. And it is in great disrepair.
Yes.
To use the term eyesore would probably describe it very well. And I think that, given all the work that has been done so far, the opportunities, the options, from the point of view of the bank, of GMAC, I will be supportive of the demolition tonight because of that. Councilor Baker.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And Amy, thank you for the, for the narrative there, the story behind it. It was an interesting web of, of conversations and explanations.
I think you might be being kind.
Well, something that, so to echo the comments here, these are something, these are matters that we take very seriously. As has been noted, it's been many years since we've had the circumstance to face a decision like this. However, you know, as I, as I viewed the facility and saw the photos of the inside of the location, which I was unable to, I'm not going to look in the window or anything like that. This is a very clear decision, in my mind, anyway. It's, it's very serious, but also very clear that the building, you know, is, is in severe state of calamity. I have concern for the neighbors and the, the quality of life surrounding this place, given the, the collapsed roof and, and all of the, you know, who knows what infestation has taken hold inside of the location. It's, it's, it's time. And I appreciate the work and the diligence and the, the care with which you and the city have pursued this. And it's just reached where it's at. So I did have a question in terms of, you mentioned the, the short sale, I think that was what you mentioned, that's looming out there somewhere. If we were to move forward with this and the twenty-one-day clock starts ticking, would there be a way in which we would set aside the demolition if they were to sell it? How would, how might that work?
What would happen is, they have twenty-one days. The property owner's going to get a letter, assuming that this is passed tonight from me tomorrow. I'll send it out saying that you have twenty-one days to comply with this order. They have that amount of time. If they don't comply, then I'm, then I'm going to have to start looking for contractors to demolish the house and then start pursuing it with regard to the utilities to get those shut. So there, there is time with this. And I, I think, you know, we're not really interested in having us go through and knock it down when, if a developer's going to come along and do it, that's going to make, they have, they know their people and it's going to make things much easier on our small department. But I do feel a need that we need to be dogged about it and keep moving things along. But certainly, we've, up until this point, been trying to let the private sector take it on and it, it needed a nudge. So I'm all about nudging, just not about taking over, so. So there would be a way to, it's not all going to happen tomorrow.
Right.
I'm not going to send them a note saying the bulldozer's on their way.
Very good. Any, Councilmember Vanson?
Thanks for a wonderful job documenting this. We do need to get better pictures of the inside if we do this again, but maybe we need to get a new camera for Mr. Franks, but the pictures on the inside weren't very clear. But it does, to me, look like it's, it's in such bad shape that it can, also cannot be restored. And so I think that as long as we're not doing anything to impede the possible sale, we should move forward as fast as possible with this.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, seeing no more discussion then on this topic, I'm assuming that we're ready for a vote. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R-1413?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-1713, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into a citywide janitorial services contract with McCoy Maintenance Incorporated in an amount net to exceed fifty-three-thousand-one-hundred dollars. This is a one-year contract with an optional two-year renewal, funds appropriated in all city departments.
Is that a motion to approve M-1713?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa.
City Council, you know, we have been working on this for quite a while. And I know that all the department heads worked very diligently to get this agreement before you. Please know that this contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and we have made any corrections or additions or any modifications per his direction. So it has been reviewed and we are recommending it for your consideration. But here again, as always, to give the city council an update and our viewing public as well exactly how we did this and the process, I've asked my assistant, Darshel Strickland-Love, to, to join us this evening and give us a summation in terms of the process that we followed in order to get to where we are today. Thank you, Ms. Love.
Good evening. This was a, I would say, fairly detailed process where I wanted to make sure that we, first of all, got the services that we need. I hate wasting money. I involved the directors from the departments who had the most unique needs to review the contracts and to make the, the final selection. After looking at about ten proposals we, that we received from various companies, we looked at the top three, the three that seemed to offer the most comprehensive things that we needed. And we interviewed them all. After the interviews, we checked their references and came back with a fairly unanimous decision, no, I would say it was unanimous, to continue with McCoy. McCoy's been with us, with the city of Berkeley for, I would guess, maybe probably at least three years before I arrived. So that's how we arrived at this point.
Are there, Ms. Sessa?
Just one more. Thank you, Ms. Love. Just, the council also knows the, the cost for this, there's very little change. It's only a forty-dollar increase from, from the previous contract, so there's not much of an increase in terms of the cost. And we're not going to be doing any type of budget adjustment. We think that we, we could be able to incur those costs. So again, it's, I think, I want to thank Ms. Love and the, and the directors, because this took a lot of work. They went department by department to make sure that we were, we were getting the right company. So thank you to staff and council. We do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this item? Seems like it is well thought out and, and a wise decision. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-1713?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven?
M, motion number M-1813, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Detroit Institute of Arts for its Inside-Out program, allowing works of arts to be placed for public viewing outside the following municipal buildings, library, public safety, and public works.
Is that a motion to approve M-1813?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadeklo. Ms. Sessa.
Council, I'm really excited about this, this, this project here. I know that the assistant has been working with the DIA in order to bring this to our city, so I thank her for her work on this. And she was able to successfully get us to be part of this, of this year's program. I know that there's an event that's coming that she'll probably be attending to represent us. And I'll let her elaborate a little further as to the process here. But the photos are here available and so that you can take a look at. And then one, one last thing. You know, many of us have attended conferences and things of that nature with regards to the effect art has on communities. And we've talked a lot about that and how important it is that art is part of our lives, art is part of our, I guess, just our everyday being and, and what it does to help improve a community. So I'm really excited and very, very, very glad that we're able to get this, this contract. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Love before I say the whole report. So, Ms. Love, if you don't mind, just a brief review in terms of who else will be joining us, or at least if you know anything to that effect and, and how this program came to be.
Well, the DIA has been doing this program for a few years. I don't know that Berkeley has ever been a participant. So this, if, if that's the case, then this is a first. But I believe right now Pleasant Ridge and Huntington Woods will also have pieces of art in their community as well. And we've, we've had some talks about doing some tours that sort of connect the dots between all the cities to look at all of the pieces of art. But the one thing that I think is really cool about this is that when you think about masterpieces that are behind walls, that people have to go to a building to see, what the DIA has done is they selected specific works of art, weatherproofed them, winterized them, and done all the cool things so you can set them outside for people to view. So these, these pieces will be placed either stakes in the ground in front of a lot or actually connected to the buildings itself. They will assume all costs, all liability. All we have to do is give them permission. They will call Ms. Diggs. They will do pretty much the work. Our part is making sure that the contracts are signed. There are two private sector property owners who are also involved in here, in, in this, in this round. And they have the contracts as well. I've talked to both of them already and are looking forward to getting their signed contracts back.
Now, these are replicas, of course, and, and they are light, you know, they're not, they're not heavy kind of materials.
They are, they are of the grade that will ta, that will endure rain, snow, sleet, and hail.
Very good. Now, will they also have a, a sentence describing the work itself?
Most likely, they're going to have a little placard. You know, when you go to the, to go to, go to the Art Institute, you see the picture and then you see a plaque that says what it is and who it's, who, who, who the creator is. I expect to see that there as well.
Yeah, I would, too. Are there any questions for Ms. Love? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Not a question, actually. But this might be a really good opportunity to get the Environmental Advisory Committee involved. They've been doing these bicycle tour groups throughout the city, doing like bike and dines. They might be able to do something between Huntington Woods, Berkeley, and put together a little bicycle tour to see the, the works when they're up, so.
We actually talked about that. We actually did talk about that.
Oh, fantastic. So I will, I'll pass that on and see if that's something that they could...
That's a good idea. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is great. You know, they, you've just got to have art.
Yes.
Lots and lots and lots of it. And so I was real impressed with the thoroughness of the, of the report here. And it does even give insights into how it would be mounted so we can visualize. So this is really clear. We can actually imagine where the artwork would be displayed. And so I, I am impressed with the thoroughness of the, of the contracts and the way in which it was thoughtfully customized for each of the pieces so that we can really have a clear understanding of what it is that we're considering here tonight. And, and I was just curious, you mentioned that this program has been in place for several years now, and I noticed the approximate timing for these installations is approximately three months or so, they talk about from July through September. And so I was wondering if there's a way to, or that we could think about, you know, receiving feedback from employees, from residents, from, from visitors as to the desirability for, you know, continuing this on an annual basis. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, as we explore this, you know, this year, to see how and what ways we could make this a, a program we would consider on a regular basis. If these were to be installed for only the three months, you know, then we could get some feedback and see if this would be something we'd want to keep our place in line for, for subsequent years.
What they do, I know that they have a cycle. And since we're just beginning this, I don't know how you get back in the cycle. So as soon as I can find that out and put our names back in the head, I will do that.
Right.
But one of the things that is most important to the people at the DIA is that the city itself promotes the artwork and encourage people to go look at them, you know? Create events, if you will, so that people can go and see it. It would be one thing to just, you know, hang a picture on the wall, nobody ever comes to your house and see it, but these are going to be like on the street. People will walk by and see them. I'm, I'm particularly excited about it only because, well, you know, growing up in Detroit, if, if you wanted to look at the really fine pieces of art, you had to go to the DIA. And as a former city of Detroit employee, I know that their art collection is fabulous. It is absolutely fabulous. So I'm really, really excited about this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadeklo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Ms. Love for her efforts on this project. I think it's going to be great. I know when people go around and they look at those various animals in the different cities, the decorative, decorative animals and everything, I think this is really going to add to our already great city as people are driving around or riding their bicycles. And again, I want to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. I'd like to come back to the point made by Councilmember Platt Onson. I, I think we don't want an extension of that. I don't think we want people to accidentally stumble upon one of these pieces of work. We need to have it publicized in such a way it's on our website or it's somewhere where people have access to it so that they can maybe decide on a Sunday afternoon to ride their bike and just see them all and know where they all are.
I think we can take care of that.
Yeah. Ms. Sessa.
Council, just one more thing to the public out there. These, these are exact replicas and they are quite beautiful. So I encourage everyone to please take a bike, walk, walk, walk a little bit, but they're quite beautiful. And it's as if you were going to the museum to look at these amazing photo, paintings of art. They're just beautiful. So I hope our, our residents will take the opportunity to, like I said, come out and take a look at them. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. On that note, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-1813?
Kadeklo?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and I believe Councilmember Platt Onson is up first.
Oh, I got my cheat sheet out just in time. Okay. Just one, just one thing. Just wanted to remind everyone that the Environmental Advisory Committee is hosting SACRA for a today's recyclables, yesterday's trash event. It is Wednesday, April seventeenth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty P.M., upstairs at the Berkeley Front. So a little interesting change of venue there. So it's going to be interactive. SACRA suggests that you bring three items you have always wondered about in terms of what's recyclable and what's not. I always question those little plastic trays in my Girl Scout cookies because is that really a container? I'm not sure. So bring items like that. Be prepared to ask questions. No question will go unanswered.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to welcome Mr. Stern and his entire firm, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
For many years. This past week, or week and a half, I was fortunate enough to visit a couple new businesses in Berkeley. One, I met Becky, the owner of Rediscovered Furniture, which is on 12 Mile Road just west of Griffith. And it's really neat, where she'll refurnish wooden furniture and also make some. And it's really nice. If you get a chance, you should walk in there. And then the other one was the calorie-free Holy Cannoli, right next to Camelot Cleaners. The cannolis are excellent. I was fortunate enough to meet Nicole at one of the chamber chats, but also I met her parents, and they have seventy-five different flavors of cannolis. So it'll be really fun to watch and eat. I want to thank Mayor, former Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Goodcourage, Dale Goodcourage. I've been watching him work on this project from day one, and his heart is as big as he is. It really is. And he has been working 24/7, it seems, on this project for Sergeant Leach's memorial. And I just want to thank him for all of his efforts. Current Mayor Pro Tem, Dan Turbrack, this Wednesday, along with Judge Jamie Wittenberg, will be celebrating their birthdays. So I want to wish them a happy birthday. And I know it opened today in Minnesota, but can't wait till Friday, 54 and sunny. Go Tigers. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Turbrack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to welcome Mr. Stern and the firm. As we've already gone over a number of times, we had a lot of very qualified applicants for the position, and we hired an exemplary firm, and I'm very happy to be working with you. If we're mentioning birthdays, Councilmember Kadekko just had a birthday a few years ago. A few days ago, I should say. He's many years ahead of mine, but he did have one a few days ago, so happy birthday to him as well.
Thank you.
The Tigers did win four to two today, thanks to the internet. I can find that out during the meeting. And if you are going downtown on Friday, as I will be, please be safe. It is supposed to be a relatively nice day. Spring is here. Go Tigers. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Welcome aboard, and we're glad to have you and your firm here with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was Clifford Stoll who once said, "Treat your password like your toothbrush. Don't let anybody else use it, and get a new one every six months." Again, that was, "Treat your password like your toothbrush. Don't let anyone else use it, and get a new one every six months." I offer that a little bit of a technology twist to the quote of the night here, because as a matter of fact, yesterday, it was Sunday, March 31st, was World Backup Day. I don't know how many of you celebrated along with me in backing up everything I own, but it's, I like the idea, and it doesn't happen to be sponsored by the manufacturers of hard drives and things like that. It actually is a real thing. And they talk about it in terms of being prepared for April Fools in case something happens to your equipment or computers or stuff like that, that you have a backup handy. But when I think about the degree to which we become more and more connected to one another through technology, the ways in which we rely upon simple things like phone books, you know, address books, birthday reminders, those kinds of things, to have the digital rug pulled out from under you in the form of a, you know, problem with a hard drive or a computer or something like that, it's worth thinking about making a backup and storing it in a safe place, keeping it properly encrypted, because you don't want a backup to get out and cause you harm that way as well. But just something to think about, take care of yourself from a digital perspective as well. Looking ahead a little bit, this week's Saturday is April 6th, and it marks an anniversary for the city of becoming an official jurisdiction. So it was on April 6, 1923, so this will be ninety years that Berkeley became a village. As you know, we've since become a city in May 23rd of 1932, but I don't want to let this important milestone pass us by when we went from being a part of the Royal Oak Township to being our own village. This Saturday marks the ninetieth anniversary of that. And a little bit later this month, on Thursday, April 25th, to be exact, will be the next public meeting of the Woodward Avenue Alternatives Analysis Study. As you know, Woodward Avenue is one of our shared assets here in the region, and there's a study underway to see how and what forms of regional mass transit would benefit us in Berkeley, would benefit our region, would help the business owners, would help the residents, would help our visitors be able to get here and there, whether it's down to the ballgame, or whether it's to celebrate a birthday party or anything in between, to be able to leverage a safe and reliable mass transit. So again, the next open house is on the 25th. It's a Thursday. It is free. It's open to the public. It's at our very own Berkeley Community Center. We get to, we have the pleasure of hosting not only for Berkeley, but also residents and our friends at Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, and Royal Oak will be joining us there. So it should be an interesting opportunity for us within our part of the Woodward Corridor to get together to talk about our ideas. There'll be some designs that we can look at. There'll be some little information stations throughout the room where we can talk with regional officials and transit experts about the various options, and to provide our input into this, so that this becomes something that we are involved with, right? Us here, the folks in our city and in our region, to help shape how and in what ways transit can be brought, so that we can benefit for decades to come. So I'd encourage you to come. Again, it's Thursday, the 25th, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30. 5:30 to 7:30 with a combination of formal presentation and open Q and A, and, you know, at those different stations and things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Steadman?
Other than to welcome Mr. Stern and his firm.
Thank you.
To our meeting here tonight and for the next few years, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blanchard?
One thing about being a last of all, things have been covered, but I, too, will welcome Mr. Stern and his firm, and I also want to say thanks to our previous attorney for the work that he did over the years that he was here, and looking forward to good relationship with your firm. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Sessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I'd like to welcome Mr. Stern. Congratulations, and thank you very much. I look forward to working with you as well. For the public out there, just a friendly reminder, please visit our website at BerkeleyMish.org, and you can get some updates to many of these items. Just quickly, on Saturday, April 13th, I know our city clerk's going to be anxious to make sure you remind everybody, that's our animal vaccination clinic. Please bring your pets to the Public Safety Building on Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And vaccinations for your pets are available at five dollars. So please join us. Also, I know, I think, I believe this was mentioned, Wednesday, April 17th, 6:30 p.m. at the Berkeley Front. SACRA is having that meeting. I apologize, Councilmember. I did not mean to drop my iPad here. Again, just a friendly reminder to everybody, you know, please join us at the Berkeley Front on Wednesday, April 17th. And then finally, also, for our public safety, we're having our golf outing on May 17th, 1:00 p.m. And the benefits for this outing, I'll go to Lids for Kids, the Fire Prevention Open House, and the Honor Guard. So again, we encourage all our residents and interested individuals to please help us with this golf outing. Again, all of this information is available on our website. So thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Stern, welcome. I also want to get to your resume. I read through it, and Mr. Stern is a hockey guy. That's good news. So, very good. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sabuda. And now to the hockey guy.
Former hockey guy. Well, thank you for the very warm welcome. It's much nicer than the boos and hisses that I, as an attorney, sometimes get when I walk into a room. Something tells me that some of the future meetings will be a little more challenging from a legal standpoint than this one, and that's fine. We'll be up for the task and be prepared. We're doing our best to get quickly oriented with the city. We already had some familiarity. We've been reviewing the ordinances in the minutes, and thanks to Clerk Prince, I got my very own official code here, so I don't have to just rely on MuniCode online. Last week, my partner, Ann Krist, and I spent some time with Judge Wittenberg and also the court administrator, Ms. Bonet. We also met with the police administration, spent a considerable amount of time with the chief and the deputy chief, going over a lot of things this morning. Spent a couple hours with Ms. Sessa and Clerk Prince and some others, just going over the agenda tonight, some other things, answering some questions I had. And I'm looking forward to meeting with the department heads tomorrow in the, I guess we call it the follow-up meeting, the post-mortem meeting, whatever, whatever the meeting is. And so we're doing our best, although I must apologize, I did miss the memo about Computer Backup Day, but we'll make sure that gets done. But thank you all, and look forward to working with you. And I agree, go Tigers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have just a few comments, and the first one, obviously, is to join my colleagues in welcoming you. I think you will find this a wonderful city to work in. You will find our department heads, our employees, and the council, a congenial lot, but a bright lot as well. Folks who have studied the issues and will have questions that will be penetrating. So we will have, we will have a good time going down the road, dealing with the issues that arise as they arise. And we like to, in this city, think ahead, to be prepared for things that might arise down the way. So we will be relying on your insights in that respect as well. We have, I'd like to recognize and welcome a member of the Berkeley School Board in the audience, Mr. Mitch Moses. We're delighted you're here with us this evening. A few other things, I heard Councilmember Kadekko announce the opening of a couple of other businesses in town. Well, there's one that has opened on Coolidge. It was opened on Saturday. It is called Nom Nom's Cupcake Factory. Now, I take my job very seriously as mayor, and quality control is a very important thing. And so on Saturday, I visited this cupcake factory and discovered that it is being run by a Berkeley High School graduate called Tonia and her fiance, Mr. Grigsby. And so it was nice to see a Berkeley High School person setting up a business in our town, and we wish them well. They bring a kind of international flavor to their recipes, and I can assure you that they are excellent. I had to do the quality control bit, and I did it, I think, very well. You can't just leave it to one sample. You have to take several samples. Thoroughness is required here.
That's right.
And the final item is a wonderful item. As mayor of the city, I get to represent, and it's a great honor for me, to represent the city at a variety of organizations and associations across the state. And one of them is called SEMCOG, Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments. And we had our meeting last week, and SEMCOG provides a lot of scholarly research that helps municipalities like ours make decisions that are anchored in the best scholarship, the best knowledge that is available at the time. They look at regional transportation, water supplies, sustainable energy, those kinds of things, and they make a big difference. But one other area in which they make a difference is they sponsor two full scholarships to Harvard for two people each year that they select, people that they see exhibiting enormous promise and suitability for study at Harvard's Kennedy School of Government. This year, the announcements were made, and two people were selected. One is the Wayne County Commissioner, Kevin McNamara, and the other is the distinguished council member from the city of Berkeley, Steve Baker. We are enormously proud that Steve has been selected. They have honored his contribution to this city and to the region. And those of us who sit up here are very familiar with the extent of his contribution with regard to regional transportation and a variety of other issues across this area. And it's nice to see that SEMCOG recognized that, honored that. And Steve will be a great candidate to study at Harvard and to come back with creative ideas and relationships with colleagues from Michigan and around the country that will redound to the benefit of our city and our region. So, Steve, it is a great honor for us as a city, and we're very proud of you. Thank you very much. And on that notion, on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekko.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Steadman. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And so the Fools' Day meeting of the 34th Council comes to an end.